Good evening. This work session of the Osseo School Board is being conducted in the Forum Room of ESC. Today is November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The work session is being audio recorded. Recording will be made available on the district website within twenty-four hours after the work session is ended. The purpose of this school board work session is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information and map forward to the right direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular work meetings. That'll come up today's work session, and board members will receive information and updates on world's best workforce results, long-range financial planning, budget parameters, long-term facilities maintenance, as well as a board calendar review. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that board members, cabinet members and staff go around the tables, leaving the names serving here.
Jackie Mosketa-Jones, school board member.
Tamara Grady, she heard her, school board member.
Karen Cave, Assistant Director of the Community Education Department.
Cave Lala, Community Relations Director.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement.
John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Robin Gudzolos, Director of Learning and Achievement.
Jenna Johnjoy-Arstad, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Tom Watkins, Coordinator of Data and Assessment.
Steve Wuss, Assistant Superintendent for the Elementary Schools.
Kelly Parpard, Assistant Superintendent for the Secondary Schools.
Anthony Panis, Executive Director of Technology.
Heather Darkless, School Board Member.
Tanya Simons, School Board Member.
Tim Volmetyer, General Counsel.
Corey McIntyre, Superintendent.
Chelsea Dastman, School Board Member, and I'm going to handle it with you.
All right. Well, thank you, and welcome, board members and cabinet members and other members of our team and the public here with us tonight. So we have four agenda items on the docket for us tonight. First, we'll hear about our world's best workforce results from Dr. Bass and Robin Gudzolos, Director of Learning and Achievement. And then we'll have our long-range financial planning, budget parameters, about seven fifteen as we watch the clock and try to pace ourselves through our work tonight. At eight o'clock, we'll work through our long-term facilities and maintenance update with John Morsted and Dale Carlstrom. And then we'll finish off the evening with an update on our one-year board calendar review. So to get us started, I just wanted to reflect back on, you know, we've been doing so much work on our vision cards and our strategic plan and our operational plan at the district, department, and site level. And I think that's where our focus has been, and so this is a little different in the sense these are the results we need to report this day. And what you're going to see is continued effort to align to our efforts to improve our results through, finally, our operational plan and our strategic plan. So that's something we haven't had in past years as we've talked about these results. So what you're going to see is our team trying to make those connections for, here's where we stand as a baseline, as we've talked in our vision cards, as we're trying to move the needle on improvement through your commitments as a word in that strategic plan and the operational plan and those strategic initiatives that are in there. So with that kind of backdrop, Brian, I'll turn over to you, and for Robin, he'll lead us off. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Members of the board, excited to share with you our world's best workforce with an intentionality of trying to situate this, as Superintendent McIntyre said, within our strategic plan and our operational planning work. So you'll see that intentionality and also situating us not just as a district looking at ourselves internally, but also seeing us in comparison to other districts when we can, when we have that comparison data to include. So I also just want to give a shout out to Robin and the team. So as you know, we're bringing new vision cards every other month, and there was no rest in this month because we had world's best workforce. So they have been putting in a lot of hours to provide a very thoughtful approach to sharing data with you, and I just have to acknowledge their efforts before they get started. So thank you all very much. Robin?
Yeah, thank you all. Good evening, everyone. So we are just going to begin, and I'm going to use the clicker, which never works for me, and I'll listen to this tonight. So again, thank you for being here. We're going to go through the data. So the outcomes of our presentation is to examine various data points related to Osseo Area Schools' World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan from the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year and to learn about current strategic improvement actions to positively impact this data. We added a variation to this year's presentation, as Dr. Bass said. So this year, we're going to give evidence from site through-year operational plans to offer a through line from the mission to strategic directions to site action so that you can see how the strategic plan is coming down to each of our sites and what they're planning to do about impacting the data in a positive way. As you know, each initiative aims to improve the daily lived experience and quality of education of our scholars. We're going to start with, before we begin the conversation around this work, we want to really highlight the connection between our newly implemented strategic directions, as Dr. Bass said, and as part of our strategic planning efforts and the world's best workforce goals and legislations to see how they work together. We're going to focus on them. So here is a graphic that talks about the world's best workforce. So as we look at the multitude of data points presented tonight, it's important that we begin by grounding us in the statutory requirements related to the world's best workforce legislation. The five best workforce goals, which you can see listed here, are as follows. Each scholar is ready for kindergarten. Each third grader can read at grade level. Each scholar graduates from high school. Each scholar is ready for college and career, and the achievement gap is closed on all state mandated measures. Each year, the school districts around the state are required to submit a world's best workforce plan and to share information in a public meeting, which we're doing tonight. This plan for this upcoming school year is due on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and it will be posted on our district website. The data that you see tonight will be closely aligned to the world's best workforce goals. And so this is mostly last year's data. So it was the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two data, except for graduation data that is actually the spring of two thousand and twenty-one. So the graduation data is one year behind because that's how we can get it from the state. It always takes them a little bit longer to get all their data in. On this slide, you can see the five strategic directions for Osseo Area Schools and that are in the first year of implementation. Of these strategic directions, two are specifically connected to this presentation. The second, which is build and nurture a culture of achievement by providing content-rich, rigorous, and individualized pathways, and the fifth, which is lead, develop, and align our district work toward continuous improvement. As we begin the presentation tonight, I want to again share this graphic on street data because it gives us context to the data that we're going to be looking at this evening. The data that you will see tonight is that very high-level system data called satellite data. So it gives us part of the story of our district, but it doesn't give us the whole story. And we really cannot use it for transforming instruction or making specific decisions around programming because the data varies greatly across our whole system and even within a school and even within the classroom as we're working with small groups and et cetera. So it's very high-level data that can show us patterns and our goals towards our strategic So the first world's best workforce goal that we would like to highlight in this presentation is all children are ready for school. Jenna is going to start us showing this data.
All right. So this first slide shows us the pre and post-assessment achievement data for our pre-K students in our system, and we're using the Teaching Strategies Gold or TS Gold Assessment. And we're showing data over the past five years and our initial screening for this year. This assessment is designed to provide us with the information about the extent to which our pre-K students are ready for kindergarten. It measures early literacy, early numeracy, and social-emotional skill development. You'll notice that the yellow bars show the pre-assessment proficiency, while the darker blue bars show our post-assessment proficiency. One point to mention is that the post-assessment results from the nineteen-twenty school year were not available as we were not able to administer that assessment due to pandemic and subsequent school closures. As we can see, the fall pre-assessment score for the two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two school years were lower than in previous years. However, after a year in our school district pre-K program, the change in proficiency was on par with or greater than in previous years. This year's fall assessment scores were comparable to pre-pandemic years. Okay. And on this slide, we can see assessment results from our kindergarten and first-grade scholars. The bars to the left show the percentage of kindergarten students that were identified as being low-risk in the fall over the last three years. A student earning a score that places them in the low-risk range means they likely do not need academic intervention and tend to be at grade level in their mastery of standards. The bars to the right show the percentage of first-grade students that were identified as being low-risk in the fall over the last three years. These data help inform us of how prepared students are when they enter school in both kindergarten and first grade.
As we can see, identified on this slide are the following actions that are being taken at the district level to positively impact our world's best workforce goal. The first action that I would like to highlight has been a focus over the past years, and that is to strengthen our data collection and analysis to drive instruction. Data from our TS Gold Assessments, which were referenced earlier, can be used to evaluate programming and make actionable instructional decisions. This information is shared with teachers as students transition into kindergarten from pre-K. In addition to using this data to inform instruction, we are tracking this information by student to understand the long-term effects of our pre-K programming. The onset of the pandemic was the first year that our BPK students were in third grade, so that interrupted our data collection. And so that was interrupted then, so we didn't have that year. And then also, the last two years, we want to make sure, we want to have every confidence that the assessments accurately reflect the student progress. So we're going to continue to work on that in the upcoming years and making sure that our students stay on track as they're entering, as they have that BPK experience all the way through school. On this slide, you can see one of the strategic actions that we wanted to, you can see on this slide is a three-year operational plan from one of our sites. And that's what we wanted to really show you is how we're tracking and looking at how the actions that we're taking at a site impact our district growth, too. So this is Palmer Lake Elementary, and on their three-year operational plan, you can see that there's an area of focus on phonics, comprehension, intervention, and support for early learners in the area of reading. The second world's best workforce goal that we would like to highlight in this presentation is all third graders can read at grade level. Jenna will share some data points that align with this goal.
All right. So on this slide, we can see the results of the twenty-one, twenty-two Spring A-Reading Fast Bridge Assessment. In this chart, we can see two pieces of information. The first is the yellow section of the bars, which represents the percentage of students whose scores indicate they are at low risk for needing reading intervention. The second are the blue section of the bars, which show the percentage of students who are very low risk and are projected to be on track for college and career readiness. There was little variability in the overall percentage of students at low or very low risk in third through fifth grade, with grade five having the highest combined percentage at fifty-one percent. Students in second grade had the lowest rate at forty-two percent, which is a trend we saw across sites last year. We believe this to be the result of the pandemic as students had interrupted learning when they were requiring those crucial foundational literacy skills and students not earning scores that, sorry, excuse me, students not earning scores that place them at low or very low risk will be provided with extra supports for accelerating their learning. Many sites specifically targeted second grade with whole class, small group, and individual interventions. Sites are continuing to support these students as they enter third grade this year.
Oh, I shouldn't have tapped so soon. Yeah. Okay. I'm going to go up and get the mouse.
It gets doing that thing. We had the last board meeting where we flipped in advance a couple of slides.
Okay. So this is the right slide? Yeah. Okay. Thanks. So here we can see the growth scholars made on the A-Reading Assessment in grades two through five. As we look at this chart, the first area I want to highlight is the bottom of this slide, and that's that national overall growth at bottom bar. Growth targets are determined through a national study looking at a representative group of students. Typical growth is defined as the growth that fifty percent of students in the study achieved, and aggressive growth is the growth that twenty-five percent or that top quartile of students made. Fast Bridge periodically recreates this study to update the growth targets. The last time the study was conducted was in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, which was pre-pandemic. Nationally, Fast Bridge scores have decreased, which would mean that the targets would have decreased as well had the study been updated. Another area I'd like to highlight is second grade. In the last slide, we showed you that second grade had the lowest percentage of students at low or very low risk. And here you can see that those students had a higher rate of growth with sixty-one percent achieving typical or aggressive growth. This would indicate that the instruction and support for second-grade students was The data you see on this chart are the MCA results of our third-grade students over the last three years compared with third-grade students in like-school districts. Like districts are those that are similar to Osseo Area Schools in size and demographics. The bright yellow bar that is the second from the right is Osseo, and that blue bar that is the furthest to the right is the state. So as you can see on this chart, third-grade scholars in Osseo Area Schools consistently rank about third or fourth in the percent proficient among this group of districts.
All right. Thank you for your patience. There we go. You enjoy it? Okay. Thank you, Tom.
You okay, Tim?
I know. Do you want to do it? Can we do it?
Okay. Now I don't have the mouse.
I have the mouse right here, that's why.
I think I escaped you there, so. Is it working now?
Yep. I clicked on the line. See?
Click five.
There we go. Thank you. All right. Finally. As you can see on this slide are the identified actions that the district is taking to positively impact this world's best workforce goal. Professional development has been provided prior to the school year and will continue to be offered throughout the school year to support teachers with various strategies to use with scholars to accelerate their learning. The professional development includes opportunities for teachers to engage in and be compensated for letters training, which is focused on providing foundational reading skills to students. This year, we're resetting our multi-tiered system of support at the system level by engaging with the Centers of Excellence and participating in an MDE cohort training to improve our support that we provide to schools around our multi-tiered systems of support. The program improvement process is currently underway for English Language Arts as we are piloting two curriculum resources in elementary. Additionally, we are piloting supplemental resources called HEGERTY, which is a phonics and phonemic awareness program meant to complement core instructional materials. And lastly, five schools are piloting an NUA partnership to learn about and embed culturally grounded, high-operational practices in their instruction. At the site level, this is an example of what Rice Lake is doing to ensure that all students are successfully able to read by third grade. Do you want to do that? I can try. I'll bring the mouse up here.
Thank you. Other duties as assigned.
Obviously, we need work. We already changed it. Sorry. So this is what Rice Lake is doing. As you can see on this plan, there's a through line from the system actions that I mentioned on the last slide to the actions that are taking place at this site. In addition to letters training and the ELA pilot, Rice Lake is using data to focus whole group and small group instruction and redesigning their wind time, which is what everyone needs time. Thank you. The third world's best workforce goal that I'd like to highlight tonight is, in this presentation, is all students graduate from high school. Tom will be sharing data related to this goal.
As I begin sharing our data around all students graduating from high school, I'm starting with the elementary MCA data. And this is because we know that preparation for graduation begins as soon as they enter our school system. So this graph shows the percentage of our elementary students who are proficient on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, or MCA. Reading and mathematics assessments include third, fourth, and fifth grade students, and the science assessment only includes fifth grade. And for each content area, the purple bar on the left is our district results, and the yellow bar on the right is the statewide results. We can interpret these results in the context of our pre-pandemic results in two thousand and nineteen. For example, in reading, Osseo Area Schools was approximately one percent below the state average in twenty-two, yet in two thousand and nineteen, we were four percent below the state average. Similarly, for math, we were two percent below the state average in two thousand and twenty-two, but in two thousand and nineteen, we were four percent below the state average. And we were approximately four percent below the state average in science for two thousand and twenty-two, and then that compares with twelve percent below the state average in two thousand and nineteen. So in each content area, students in Osseo Schools achieved at levels closer to the statewide average in two thousand and twenty-two than they did in two thousand and nineteen prior to the pandemic. Thank you. We're just, we need to go back one, I think.
Back.
Yeah. So I'm not sure how that.
I can go forward.
Oh, we got it. Middle school, there we go.
I can step up here, too.
Okay. So this graph shows the percentage of proficiency for middle schools overall. The reading and math tests include sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, while the science test only has eighth graders. We can see that Osseo Schools was three percent below the state average in reading in two thousand and twenty-two, while in two thousand and nineteen, we were five percent below. We were four percent below the state average in math in two thousand and twenty-two, while in two thousand and nineteen, we were seven percent below. And in science, our students were nine percent below the state average in two thousand and twenty-two, but in two thousand and nineteen, we were twelve percent below the state average. Transitioning to the MCA results for our high schools, this graph shows the proficiency percentage for high schools overall. The reading test includes all tenth graders, the math test includes all eleventh graders, and then the science test includes all the students taking biology. Osseo Schools was on par with the state average in reading in two thousand and twenty-two, but in two thousand and nineteen, we were two percent below. We were six percent below the state average in math in two thousand and twenty-two, but in two thousand and nineteen, we were eight percent below the state average. And finally, we were seven percent below the state average in science in two thousand and twenty-two and also in two thousand and nineteen. And so at this point, we can just transition to the graduation and dropout rates. The top section of the table contains four-year graduation and dropout rates for the last four graduating classes as reported by the Minnesota Department of Education, or MDE, in two thousand and twenty-one. They're also called, these four-year rates are also called on-time graduation and dropout rates, and we anticipate receiving results for the class of two thousand and twenty-two sometime this spring. When we add our four-year graduation and dropout rates together, it's only about eighty-six percent. That's because at that point, about thirteen percent of our students were continuing high school or had an unknown status. The bottom part of the table, we're looking at seven-year rates, which is the status of students three years after their typical on-time graduation year. At this point, when we add up the graduation dropout rates, we can see that only one percent of district students are still continuing or unknown. Seven-year graduation rates have remained above the state average for each of the past eight years. For most of these years, Osseo's seven-year rate has been above ninety percent, and the statewide average has not achieved that rate once. The next graph is comparing on-time for Osseo and statewide graduation rates for the class of two thousand and twenty-one with those of other large Minnesota districts with comparable demographics. These districts had at least eight hundred seniors enrolled in two thousand and twenty-one with twenty-four to sixty percent free reduced-price meals and thirty-five to eighty percent students of color. Each column designates a different student group: all students, American Indian, Asian, Black, Hispanic, white, multiracial, female, male, students receiving English learner services, students eligible for free reduced-price meals, students receiving special education services, students experiencing homelessness, and multilingual students with limited or interrupted formal education, or SLIF students. The district with the highest graduation rate for that particular group is colored green, and the district with the lowest graduation rate is colored red. Results are only reported if the total number of enrolled students is at least ten. As we look for patterns, first, we can see that Osseo's graduation rate overall was in the average range among these districts, about the same distance between the highest and lowest performing districts. Second, graduation rates for three groups in Osseo were at or above the state average for the same group. This included students who identify as white, students who identify as Black, and students eligible for free reduced-price meals. Third, students who identify as white had the highest graduation rates in our district and were within three percent of the highest white graduation rate in these districts. Finally, there were three groups with graduation rates below fifty percent in two thousand and twenty-two: students experiencing homelessness, multilingual students with limited or interrupted formal education, and students who identify as American Indian. This graph contains dropout rates for the class of two thousand and twenty-one with the same group of districts with the same demographics. Similar to the previous slide, the district with the lowest dropout rate for that particular group is color-coded green, and the district with the highest dropout rate is colored red. It's important to note that students may show up in more than one category. As we can see, Osseo's overall dropout rate of six percent was two percent above the state average. Also, the Osseo student groups with the lowest dropout rates were students identifying as Asian or white and female students. Additionally, Osseo students identifying as Black and Osseo students experiencing homelessness had the highest dropout rates among their peers in all of these districts. In order to provide some context regarding the rates on the previous table, this table provides the number of students in each group who dropped out. This is important because student group size varies across the different districts. As stated earlier, students may count in more than one category. Osseo Schools had ninety-seven students who dropped out in two thousand and twenty-one, which you can see in that first column. And then male students, male dropouts outnumbered female dropouts more than two to one, and that was typical among these comparable districts. Okay. The next slide, I think, is back to you.
So actions of working on the district over to support this world's best workforce goal. And one of them is really to help students and support, to help students by identifying paths to graduation opportunities and to participate in credit recovery programs designed around standards and have students that students haven't yet met. So in the past, sometimes students would have to retake whole classes to get those graduation, graduation credits. Instead, really identifying the standards that they haven't mastered yet and making sure that they're targeting the instruction for those specific students on those standards so that they can acquire the standards and receive a graduation credit for graduation. Also, really looking at how students are accumulating credits and identifying patterns that would help us impore, like how can we better support those students that seem to be struggling in those specific areas? And one of the things that Nathan has been working on really hard is looking at the credits that other Indian students have, and how can we support students by making sure that they have those credits that they need to move forward with and making sure that they are in first-sparing classes instead of classes that don't give them credit for graduation. And then really, by Also, really looking at how students are accumulating credits and identifying patterns that would help us implore, like, how can we better support those students that seem to be struggling with those specific areas? And one of the things that Nathan has been working on really hard is looking at the credits that other Indian students have, and how can we support students by making sure that they have those credits that they need to move forward with and making sure that they are in first-sparing classes instead of classes that don't give them credit for their graduation? And then really by implementing the social-emotional curriculum that we're doing pre-K through 12th grade, really focusing on belonging and making sure that students have that sense of belonging while they're in school so they feel comfortable in education. Yes, it's an example of Oseo senior highs for your operational plan, and there's some specific actions identified on this plan that really focus on graduation. One of that is in the standard work, as Oseo, every, Oseo senior high has been really looking to ensure that we are following students and making sure that they have the credits that they need in order to graduate and that they're intended so that they can get those credits. I think that's a huge part of it, too. They also have, they also have an instructional leadership team, a classroom teachers and staff that work collaboratively to make sure that things are in place for students and students understand the goals that they have and work towards meeting those and achieving those goals. The next one is all students ready for career in college. I'll start with ACT College Readiness Benchmarks.
So this is the ACT College Readiness Benchmark information for the 2022 graduates by test subject and compared to the state. The blue bars indicate the percent of district graduates that met the ACT benchmark for each subject, and the yellow line that extends beyond the blue bars indicate the percent of students statewide who met each ACT subject benchmark. The bar furthest to the right within the chart indicates the percent of students that met all four subject benchmarks within the district compared to students statewide. On the English benchmark, the difference between the state and Oseo area school scholars was 8%. In both 2019 and 2021, there was a difference of approximately 11%. So we see some improvement there. This year, on the math benchmark, there was an 8% difference between our district and the state, and in 2021, there was a 16% difference, and in 2020, and in 2019, there was an 11% difference. On the reading benchmark, there was an 8% difference between us and the state, whereas in 2021, there was a 10% difference. In 2019, the difference was the same as this year at 8%. On the science benchmark this year, there was a difference of 10% between us and the state, and last year, there was a 13% gap, and 2019, there was a 9% gap. The smallest gap between district graduates and the state is the percent meeting all four benchmarks, which show graduates at 6% lower than the state. And in 2021, this, this difference was 9%, and in 2019, it was 8%.
So at this point, we'll transition to higher education enrollment. And we receive the results in late November each year from the National Student Clearing House, or NSC, which records 97% of all post-secondary student enrollments. The most recent data we have received is for the class of 2021. The indicator shown on this slide is the percent of our graduates who enrolled in a higher education institution in the first fall after graduation. When we review these results, it's important to remember that we're only looking at results for our graduates. Students who are continuing in high school or who dropped out are not included in these analysis. Over the past four years, Oseo's highest rate of post-secondary enrollment was in 2019, just before the pandemic. In each of these four years shown, students who identify as white or Asian had the highest enrollment rates, followed by students who identify as Black and students who identify as American Indian. Students who identify as Hispanic had the lowest enrollment rates in most years, while students who identify as multiracial had rates comparable with American Indian and Black in most years. This next slide is a continuation of the previous one with higher education enrollments for Oseo graduates in the first fall after high school graduation. For most groups on this slide, 2019 was the high point for higher education enrollment as it was for the district as a whole. Female students were 9% more likely than male students to enroll in college in 2018, and this gap increased to 12% in 2021. Results for students eligible for free or reduced-price meals were in the average range of Oseo racial groups, just below the average for students who identify as Black. Results for students receiving special education services were typically more than 10% below those of the next highest performing group. Higher education enrollment rates for students eligible for English learner services decreased more than 10% from before the pandemic to after. These are results up to the class of 2020, which is the most current statewide comparison data available from MDE. Statewide results for the class of 2021 are expected later this school year. These statewide results are reported by MDE using data received from the National Student Clearing House. The process is that the NSC releases results to individual districts first, and then one year later, the results are reported statewide by MDE. Because of this, most recent statewide comparison results are for class of 2020. Statewide results for 2021 will get later this year, as we mentioned. And so in this chart, we're only looking at districts that are most closely matched with Oseo. This is a little tighter group than what we were talking about before. This is within 10% of our free reduced meal percentage and percent of students of color. As we look at these results, two patterns emerge. First, for each of these graduating classes, Oseo students were at least 4% more likely to enroll in higher education than students statewide and students in our most comparable districts. Second, there was a drop of at least 3% in each district and statewide from 2019 to 2020, offering another indicator of pandemic impact. In this slide, we're looking at persistence of our graduates in higher education relative to the state and our most closely matched districts. These statewide results are also reported by MDE using data provided by the NSC one year after initial release to districts. We can note four things here. First, 84% of Oseo students in the class of 2019 who enrolled in higher education continued into a second year of college. Second, 69% of Oseo students who enrolled in higher education continued on for a third year or graduated. Third, Oseo's second-year enrollment rates are 1% above the state and within 1% of Bloomington, which had the highest percentage among comparable districts. Finally, Oseo's third-year persistence is at least 4% above the state in each comparable district. Taken together, there are multiple indicators that our graduates enroll in higher education at a level somewhat higher than the state and comparison districts.
So there are some things that are happening at the system level around career and college readiness. Really working on those pathways that you worked on so hard last year to, for students to really find out what their passion is and to get some post-secondary opportunities. Also, we're modeling and discussing the importance of college and career preparation at all levels, starting in elementary all the way through high school. And then we're engaging in dropout prevention work, which includes the check and connect, and I think you've heard about previously. Another piece that is, that we're looking at and we will also see as we talk about gap reduction, is we're really focusing on AVID strategies and helping our sites get more training on AVID. And this you can see in the through line, through, the through your operational plan at Brooklyn, Brooklyn Middle School. And so one of the goals that you can see in the learning work is the AVID instructional strategies and literature. And AVID is a program, and I think you've heard about this several times before, but AVID is a program that helps prepare students with the skills that they need so that they're college-ready and especially those students who are the least represented in some of our post-secondary institutions. So you can see that that kind of follows through and then also the culturally responsive texts specifically selected for instructions for students to be able to see themselves and be engaged in that learning. So the next one is all racial and economic achievement gaps between students and parents.
Yeah, in this chart, we can see the rates of typical or greater growth by student group. These data represent fall-to-spring growth on the A-reading assessment from the 21-22 school year. We can see on the bar furthest to the right, the percent of students making typical or better growth nationally is 50%. Students who identify as Hispanic made a higher rate of growth than students nationally at 53% and were high, the highest among our Oseo student groups. Students who identify as multiracial were very close to the national benchmark at 49%.
In this chart, we're looking at the change in the size of graduation rate gaps from the class of 2018 to the class of 2021. Here, we're defining gaps as the difference between students identifying as white and each of the other race, gender, and service groups. There are five patterns that I'll mention here. First, the gap between white students in each of these groups has grown larger over these four years. Second, in 2018 and 2021, the groups with the graduation rates closest to the white rate are students identifying as Asian and female students. Third, in both years, the three groups with the lowest graduation rates were students experiencing homelessness, students identifying as American Indian, and students receiving special education services. Fourth, this is one more indicator of the impact of the pandemic being greater for students of color than for students identifying as white. And finally, in summary, we know that Oseo students have outperformed the state and/or comparable districts on seven-year graduation rates and higher education enrollment, but graduation rate gaps of 9% to 56% were observed for the class of 2021.
The things that are happening around the system to impact this data is really deepening our commitment and engaging through culturally responsive instructional strategies and dividing culturally responsive instructional materials that allow students to see themselves in the materials and make connections to look like they are learning. And we are doing this through our program improvement process, both in ELA and also continuing to support classroom libraries across the site. We went from pre-K through grade five two years ago, and this year, we're working on the high school classroom libraries so that we have diverse texts available for students right within their classrooms. Another piece that we're doing is, as I said, mentioned earlier, really supporting staff in their professional development around AVID strategies and also the NLY pilots that I mentioned previously, working on culturally, culturally responsive instructional practices and having those, those high expectations for students and that belief that all students can succeed at high levels and making sure that our instructional practices reflect that in our, in our opportunities for students to engage in those really high-level opportunities that are there at all levels. And then with the social-emotional learning implementation and the knowledge that relationships matter, so, so that's such a big deal, it's have this really strong relationships both between the, the staff and the students, but also the students in the community. And so we're focusing on that. And then working on our multi-tier system of supports that I mentioned earlier, really creating those supports for students who need that additional support, but also some reaching activities for students that are ready for those and the training activities. And it focuses on core instruction, making sure for instruction. This is an example for Northview Little School, and you can see their focus on multi-tier systems of support and really ensuring that students have the support that they need. So they have some, some strategy implementation and advisory recovery time where they're doing some interventions just as soon as they see them during the advisory, so they're not missing any content time. And they have targeted mass support, they also have support classes and AVID classes going on, so you can see throughout their through your operational plan that really focus on giving students what they need just in time so that they can make that really accelerated growth and be on track in their classes. So that is our presentation. How can they take questions?
So maybe before we take some questions, just a couple things. First, thanks to our team for putting this information together and that we were getting ready for tonight. It feels like a long time ago, but I was flashing back to last year at this time when we were really challenged with just the basic operation pieces of our district. It was transportation, it was through, it was supervision, it was having enough people to keep our doors open. If you think back to this time of year, last year, when we got to January, we weren't able to do that. So it was really basic needs, and the focus was less on instruction because of those things, we have supervision issues, it was really pervasive. I just want to put that in space. I think the, it's clear, the pandemic, and we knew this before, it's, it's clear in our data, it really disproportionately impacted our students and families of our racial and student service groups. We've known that before. So I think what we like about this year is we're back to having that focus on instruction and having consistent opportunity for that instruction instead of being interrupted consistently, or even when we were in session, having the teacher, you know, intermittently go on mute illness, those things that really affected everyone across the state last year. So I know Brian's talked a lot about this year being our baseline year and our vision cards. That, that's the, the focus around our initiatives and the new measures that we'll see to really track a different way of measuring our progress versus the kinds of data here we report to the state now. So, I don't know if Brian wants to add anything to that, but that's been on my mind as, just a year ago right now, it was a very different time and space for us and many other districts for everybody.
I think, I think what's significant is there are a number of districts who were disproportionately challenged by the context we found ourselves in during COVID. And you see that when we look at ourselves in comparison to those districts that we, we find ourselves not in the bottom of that pack, but towards the top half. And so I think that context is important. We're not satisfied in any way, shape, or form with our results. Let's be clear, we, we absolutely want to, want to, want to do better and will do better. And I think it's just important to, to think about context and how other districts, right, grapple with that, not only in our state, but also, I mean, those are national trends as well. And as Superintendent McIntyre said, we look at, we look at this now as our new baseline, right, for where we're starting moving forward. And, and hopefully with our continuity of learning and continuity of being in person and relationships with teachers and educators and the human connection that our, our kids are finding back in schools again, that, that's going to be a part of that momentum that we saw pre, pre-pandemic.
And board members, with your setting of the strategic plan, the operational plan basically centers on the academic focus that we have this year with literacy, math, science, as evidenced by a number of the program improvement efforts, and not just core instruction, but intervention on the NTSF effort. So that, that's centered around, well, how do we intervene and how do we intervene most appropriately so that we can accelerate closing those gaps that we talked about at our work session at, I don't know if I said it yet, two months ago? And how are we going to measure those things? So that's some other context before Kelsey Boardchir, Dawson Mullen, if you want to facilitate a question for your presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I will say, before we get started, I mean, this, this report has always been one that I think we've all usually laid it out well, but it's, the disparities are just devastating. They continue to be every year and every year. And, you know, the hope that I have is that because of this strategic plan, that accountability piece is in there. You know, I, it's interesting to me, I just think about like just the conversations within like the legislation and things like around MCA tests and ACT, and you know how that's going to play in because I, you know, I think that's become a bigger and bigger discussion for different educational institutions of, you know, are we using this? Is this the measurement? And I always have a hard time when, you know, with the one slide around, you know, graduation rate gaps and, you know, just the comparison against white students all the time. Like, it just makes it feel like white students are, you know, the best, right? And then our students are always trying to kind of be up there. And so that's always hard to, I just can't, I can't not say that, you know, because I believe in each and every one of our students. And I know our Black and Brown scholars are absolutely, you know, also excelling and, and, and will excel in their life, too. So I, I understand why we need to look at it, but it's just, it's hard to see as wide like that. But without, I'll open up to questions.
One comment, just to text, give you context, there is conversation, you know, the, the question with the high school tests is, are they relevant for, for, for our older students? Are they meaningful? And the question is, should we be requiring those as a state within ACT tests or some other assessment that's really a step in their future that's been in a different meaningful way? The, the challenge is, I think the state's going to continue to talk about it, you're going to see it on different legislative platforms. It's the federal-level accountability plan for the states, and that's where the states, not just Minnesota, are trying to, to give us a more meaningful test for our high school students that they'll take more seriously.
Because even now, my own daughter is applying, I mean. I mean, a lot of schools might require it, you know?
So that's in discussion, right? That's happening and it's being identified as a state needs it, makes them begin to rethink. Yeah. Thank you.
Can I clarify what you just stated? So is it an assumption that students' data looks poor because students aren't taking the test seriously or that they actually are not meeting standards? Because that's a pretty significant.
Pretty well, I hear what you're saying, but you can ask, it was a conversation, AMST, every superintendent and board member in that room said, it's a thing, it's part of it. But if there's a more meaningful test that has a more, bigger impact on their future versus assessing what I've learned in the past, Kelly's kind of shaking her head. We've worried about this for years. That's the, that level is maybe the least meaningful assessment because of, we just don't, kids don't see it the same way. As if they're going to take a college entrance exam, there's a little more riding on that, right? So I don't know if you want to jump in on that.
I was going to add on the MAS A group, we were talking about the high school exams in particular with the math. So, you know, the biology test, students take that right after they take biology, whether it's their sophomore year, junior year typically, could be their freshman year if they're advanced. The math tests, they all take as juniors, whether they took Algebra II as a freshman or a sophomore or a junior. So for some students, it's two, it could be two and a half years since they've actually been in the content that they're being assessed.
Anthony, that's a really great point to lay out with the question of relevancy, taking it at the point of learning versus, and that delayed response, and really matching assessment with the time period of learning. So that makes sense to me, so I can understand that. Where's the lead?
All right, Anya?
Yeah, I've got some questions. Well, first, I have a few comments. And primarily, I'm just going to start at the beginning because I took notes. When we're looking at our teaching strategies gold and our fast bridge for kindergarten and first grade readiness, I noticed that in the bottom of the slide for teaching strategies gold, we had a significant disproportionality between the number of participants in the test, but we're still using the same, we're using this percentage. And I feel like especially in the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, the fall in particular, when we only had sixty-two participants, like it feels almost wrong to use the data the way that we're using it because I don't think it's an accurate representation of where kids potentially were because we just don't have that data. Kids didn't participate in the program. And so I am a little bit concerned about that because it makes it look different than what it maybe actually was. And there's no real way for us to know. So I have some concerns about using the data in that way. And then that's actually my question regarding the kindergarten and first grade readiness is we're using the VPK test here and then we're not sharing the number of participants for the kindergarten and first grade readiness, fast bridge test. And then also, in this section of the slides, we're talking about percentage of students identified as low risk, but then later, we're talking about percentage of students receiving on target or above-average growth, right? So we're talking about students in two different ways, and we're talking about them in percentages and not in numbers. So it's very difficult to actually quantify where are our actual kids and what are they doing and how well are they doing? So that's a concern that I have just like as we're going through it, I feel like it's inconsistent with how we're looking at the data. And like I really want to kind of address what Kelsey said is, I just, every time I go through this, every year, we have this meeting, it's gut-wrenching. Like, I just feel sick to my stomach, and I'm sure I'm not the only person in the room that feels that way. But it makes it harder for us to, I feel like, address the issues if we're not looking at the data in a consistent way. So I just wanted to put that out there and say that. And then it also is concerning for me because when we put, when we say there's approximately fifty percent of students that are low risk, that means fifty percent are at risk. And that's scary. That's, those are really poor numbers. And I also wanted to address Brian's comments and Cory's about the pandemic. They really truly have impacted our student learning, and we're trying to get on baseline. We're trying to start fresh and move forward. But I feel this overwhelming sense of urgency, and I know that I'm not the only one that feels that way. And so I'm just, I know I'm kind of beating a dead horse, but I feel like it has to be said that some of the things that we need to do, need to happen, like, already, I should have, you know, like, I feel like we're, some things aren't being implemented fast enough for our kids. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. One of the questions I had was around the third grade literacy. It's in the site plan. Well, actually, before we get there, I wanted to know what you meant by, what foundational skills are teachers learning as part of the letters training for reading? And then I also wanted to know, when we're talking about creating system-wide, multi-tiered systems of support programming to support sites and meet the individual needs of all learners, what does that actually look like in the classroom? And then the literacy programs that we're piloting, what I'm curious about is why are we piloting two literacy curriculums and a phonics and phonemic instruction when phonics and phonemic instruction has been consistently proven to be the most effective method of teaching reading? Why is that not the primary component of the ELA program? Or is it a primary component of it? And why do we need to supplement? So those are my questions on that. And then also, why are we still using balanced literacy for standard work坊classroom practices?
Hold on a second, hold on a second.
Sorry. That was a lot, I know.
Right. I'm going to make sure you know we're listening. So the first one was the concerns around sample size for teaching strategies gold, and in particular, the two thousand and twenty year, we had a very low in size, sixty-two for two thousand and twenty in the fall. And so how do we regard that as valid comparison data? So there's the first question. And then I, okay, and then you talked about percentage versus actual numbers of students in looking at fast bridge A reading. So percentage versus numbers. And then the foundational skills from letters, what is MTSS, high-quality core instruction, what does that actually look like in a classroom?
Particularly, I'm wanting to know about the differentiation to meet individual needs of all learners.
Okay.
What does that individual need look like?
Okay. And then the literacy curriculum, that the pilots that are happening, and I think it's whether or not that's impacting the emphasis on phonics and phonemic awareness as an evidence-based practice for literacy.
I would say it's multifaceted. That and is the primary content of the curriculum, phonemic and phonics awareness based or not, and why is it necessary to have supplementation to the ELA program? Why aren't we selecting an ELA program to pilot that already encompasses the desired outcomes that we, the curriculum and standards we need?
Okay. So that first one, want to talk to the sample size?
Sure. We did percentages of the sample size, and that was what the data that we had, that's the, those are the students that were enrolled at those times. So we're just giving you the percentage of where they started and where they ended of that number of students. So it's just a straight percentage for kindergarten.
I'm sorry, though. I just, I think it's really important when we get asked the question, we do our best to answer. I'm not saying you didn't do your best.
That's right.
I'm just thinking from our data, folks.
Okay, can I be clear about that?
When you see a sixty-two and then a hundred and forty-five, how do we, how do we make sense, I think Heather's saying, how do we make sense of that? And that's a, that's fair.
So I think the reason why you do see that the N size on this slide and you don't is on a lot of the other ones is because we knew that this was kind of a problematic thing, that we did have lower enrollment that year, and so we wanted to be transparent about, you know, the number of students that were being assessed, who were included in this percentage. And from a statistical lens, we generally think of thirty as a golden number for being generalizable to a larger population. And so since we did still have sixty-two assessed that fall, we can be relatively, or have like relative confidence that that is generalizable to a larger population had they been enrolled and taken part in our school. So, you know, we can only assess, I guess, the students that are enrolled and attending, but those are kind of the reasons behind the smaller N size.
Well, there's those fewer kids in preschool.
Right. I guess.
And then, you know, when they, when they come to kindergarten, that's where we're seeing the higher at-risk because of that lack of preschool experience. So we're teaching new skills that may be some of the challenges.
And kindergarten and first grade, that'd be also, it's just like.
Yeah, students.
So every kindergarten or every first grade.
Okay, I think, okay. Next question is, percent versus numbers on fast bridge A reading grades two through five.
So they're just wanting to see the transparency of numbers?
Yeah, so, well, the question that I have is really like, on one slide, we're talking about these percentages in the yellow and the blue are low and very low risk. But then later on, we talk about them as typical growth and aggressive growth, but it's, we're not talking about like the actual numbers of kids. So if they're at low risk, does that also, they can also have excessive aggressive growth, right? So they can be in both categories. So this doesn't necessarily show us where all of our students stand. It paints a picture that might be different than what actually exists in our classrooms, right? Because if we say that approximately fifty percent of students are at low risk or very low risk, but, and then we're talking about which students had typical growth and aggressive growth, you can be at low risk or you can be at high risk and have typical growth. You can be at low risk or high risk and have aggressive growth and still be in those categories. And so that's what I'm talking about is like, I just feel like it doesn't actually give us enough information about who's at risk and are they moving out of risk? Are they, are they moving into a category where they no longer need intervention? Like, that, that's kind of what I'm wanting to see is more of that. And I know that's digging deeper and it's, you know, this is supposed to be satellite data and everything, but I feel like when it comes to reading and math in particular, those are the two greatest foundational skills that our students need to be successful in life, period. And I think that we should be putting as many eggs in the basket as we can for reading and math. And I just feel like if we're not looking at it appropriately, we're not going to be making the right decisions.
So greater transparency in the growth?
Yeah, like where are these, where is everybody? Like, if this is, if fifty percent of these kids are at risk, how many of them grew to not at risk during their growth?
Got it.
Are our methods effective?
Got it, okay.
Hopefully, you got a little deeper picture of that when we covered it in September too.
Yes.
Because that's in our vision card.
Yes.
Our measure, this is what we're reporting to the state, but for us internally, getting at what you're talking about, and hopefully you see the literacy and math at the core of our initiatives. It's the focus, it's where we got to be right now, based on the impact we, as you said, felt.
I wonder about the time. I've got the other three questions written down, if it's possible for us to provide that as a follow-up.
Follow-up.
Yeah, as a follow-up.
Well, we can provide that to everyone on the board as well.
Sure.
I'm just looking at the timeline.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe any other questions?
Yeah, can I say, just a couple of things. Having seen this presentation now four or five times, I want to thank you for the layout of this presentation, especially the examples of what the psych response to the data are going to be. I appreciate that, you know, when I look at the data and I saw the AdSys data and I saw the I-4 data, that we're, you know, moving in a direction that we want to be moving in. Obviously, we're not where we want to be. Obviously, we've, you know, had a lot of really horrific numbers as we have across the state and has I've seen in a lot of my career. I do have a couple of, like, questions. So on the higher ed enrollment by race, it looks like we have data for American Indian students for two thousand and twenty, but not two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a reason for that or we just didn't?
It's just that, yeah, just the group sizes can change a lot from one graduation class to the next.
And this data is provided from the National Student Clearinghouse, and they only do groups of ten, because we've been looking at smaller group size within our system to identify, but when we're getting, they only give us that number.
Yeah, that's what I was, in my head, we were working on trying to identify that, and they're not that.
And there's no way to get around that because I just feel like, right, and we have like EPAC and we have our meetings, like, it's always about, you know, naturally having the data.
So we can, we're continuing to work on that internally, but when we're getting that back to us from other sources.
Yeah, what happens with the National Student Clearinghouse data is that we can ask for a data file that's the actual students' results, and that will be provided to us. But when we look at that data, there's also summary information that we can get from them. The summary information is going to be much more complete than what appears in the data file because kids can opt out. They don't, they don't have to share their data if they don't want to. And at least in that file, there's a good number of kids that just decide they're not going to share that data. So we only can look at the summary information, we can't look at it all broken down. And that's how with the files, like for graduation, we can go in back and say, well, this student actually should get counted as American Indian. You know, they're multiracial in the eyes of the state, we count them as American Indian. But we can't do that with that higher ed file.
And then, let me access the present here. Oh, I'll be interested to see in our, you know, updates on the scorecards, having implemented and piloted the ELA standards and the new science curriculum. I noticed that our science course has always been one of the most, one of the lowest pieces, and I see that as in our future, that's one of the ones we want to make sure that we have that. So I'm looking forward to that quite a bit. And then I just started doing HECCARDY myself, and although I agree that our ELA curriculum needs to have phonics, it also needs to have writing and all the pieces of English language arts. And the HECCARDY is seriously fifteen minutes a day, or ten minutes a day of just little fun, running type things, so I'm glad that, having done it, I'm glad that it's in here.
Just to wrap up, I just want to say one thing about the closing achievement gaps and the direct response. I really appreciate this to double down on culturally responsive, you know, instructional strategies and materials. I know that I have seen it firsthand in classrooms, and I am just so grateful for that, so thank you. And then I think the relationships are just so key. I always go back when we do, when we do our student kind of listening sessions, and Cory would always ask, like, if you have one adult in this school, like, you raise your hand to connect with, and that makes such a difference. And so those, those relationships, I really believe is what is going to really sort of close these gaps more, and the more our scholars can see themselves in school, whether that's in materials or their teachers or, you know, whatever it is, that's where we're going to gain that high academic achievement. So, thank you.
Okay, let me keep us moving. Thank you, team. I'm going to transition to John, which tells us, Kelly Lockton, to our long-range financial planning budget parameters topic. As always, there's lots of detail in our budget for.
You want to hand out?
Yeah.
Okay. The presentation. You can see that. It's a very good. It's a good. This is a.
Saving money any way we can.
My gosh.
Cycled reuse.
That's too much.
Kevin, you gotta appreciate the invitation.
We just gotta close that.
The effort and nothing else.
She's got the mouse, so I think we can do it, or we'll try. So, good evening and thank you. This evening's presentation represents the school board's first interaction with the long-range financial planning, or what will be referred to throughout the meeting as the LRFP process for the fiscal year 2024 budget cycle. Before we get into some of the details of this year's process, I want to set the table for the information that will be presented this evening. As a reminder to board members and our community, the LRFP process is a well-established and thorough budgeting process that involves multiple stakeholders, has regular touchpoints with the school board.
Can I make it up, John?
Seriously? So we'll plug along here while that's getting rolled over. And is designed to ensure that our limited resources are allocated in the best way possible to support the mission and strategic priorities. So I'm going to kind of continue because there are packets available, and then we'll start presenting back up as we go. The first item in your packet, you're going to find the guiding change document that we've used to identify our current realities, unacceptable means, and desired results within LRFP. There's a lot of information in there, I'll let you read it, it's your leisure. We've also included the strategic plan that we've been using to now identify the directions and strategic goals to utilize within the LRFP process. The third item in the packet, you will see a model that illustrates the LRFP process. And I just want to highlight a few items, starting with the dark blue circle in the center, which is the mission. This highlights the effort to ensure that our allocation of resources is focused on the students that we serve. The gray ovals are the work of budget managers. Today, we are currently in oval number four. Business Services gave preliminary direction based on the guiding change document to ensure a zero-based budgeting approach. Any increase in budget capacity requested to support our strategic directions or work initiatives for the fiscal year 2024 budget must have a decrease in another area to ensure no overall increase in the budget. The teal boxes represent the school board's role throughout the LRFP process. Today, we're in the lower right box where the board identifies the annual budget targets. The guiding principles for the LRFP are in the upper right. All right, so at this point, I will actually introduce Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services, who will walk us through our current financial projections, which do include some assumptions related to finances and enrollments. Do you want to go view full screen and then I'll just turn the whole page. It's fun to see the mouse from a distance. This, this is what we just talked about. Go away. Here we are.
So this next item in your packet is the pair narrative. That's our program efficiency abandonment and redirection narrative. So that pair asks six key questions. So it asks what resources are being requested? It offers a summary or a description of the proposal. It identifies in response to the influence of race and culture and the development of the request through that mission strategic plan and that connection to the guiding principles that John just shared. And then what data will be used to measure results and how does that request support equitable student achievement? So there's a process connection to the guiding principles. And then the fifth question is what's the proposal's impact or rationale? And then what are the legal requirements? So the pair narrative is used for completing the LRFP analysis at the January twentieth LRFP advisory team meeting this year. And a continuous improvement process is built into the LRFP process. And we utilize surveys in the April budget manager debrief meeting for deep feedback and then potential changes to the process each year. Once we go to the next document, the next document is the fiscal year twenty eighteen for twenty nineteen through twenty-three school board approved budget adjustments impacting programs and services. This document shows the revenue expenditure adjustments for the past four years, the current year, and projects out next year. When possible, we keep those reductions as far away from direct instruction as possible. If you look at this document on the bottom half of the document, in fiscal year 2020, we redeployed 1.4 million dollars. We added $381,000 for class size outliers due to enrollment increase, and then we added $195,000 for co-located services for one year outside of long-range financial planning. In twenty-one, we eliminated $195,000 for co-located services because we were just approved for one year. And then we utilized a combination of revenue increases and redeployment of almost 1.9 million. We added again for class size enrollment and then eliminated that because the enrollment didn't occur. And then we added $343,000 for strategic investments. In fiscal year twenty-two, we adjusted 2.1 million per class size outliers and 279 online. And then we also eliminated those increases in our twenty-two mid-year budget adjustments due to enrollment being under those projected numbers. We also reduced 2.4 million due to the enrollment decline in twenty-one. And then we added back 2.8 million dollars for strategic investments. So for fiscal year twenty-three, we added 2.4 million for learning loss and utilized federal dollars for two years. We added 1.8 million dollars for class size outliers due to projected enrollment, which will now be eliminated in our mid-year budget adjustment for twenty-three. And then we also added 1.1 million for strategic investments. The next document in your packet is the historical budget trend. So again, we manage our fund balance to stay above that five percent minimum within our board policy, that's the red line. And it shows ten years' worth of data. The fiscal year twenty-three is our current budget, and then we show nine years of prior year actual data. The fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget has a planned fund balance spend down of 14.2 million dollars. You can see that that green bar is less than the blue bar. The actual results show that revenue expenditures in eight of the past nine years, our revenue has been exceeding our expenditures. This next document in your packet is our organizational complement, which is a budget summary by division. It provides detail for the general, food nutrition, community service, and capital funds. It utilizes the long-range financial planning process for budgeting. It documents changes from the prior year. This document is also located on our website and is included in our budget document. This here document shows what it is that we're buying for fiscal year twenty-three. And just moving to the next document in your packet, the next document in your packet is our benchmark districts. So again, we have eight financial benchmark districts. We work with our fiscal team as well as Forecast Five Analytics, Data Analytic Company, to determine which districts are our financial benchmarks. So if we just walk through this document, and I know it's too small on your screen, but you have your handouts. First, we look at our twenty-two student demographics. We look at how many students we serve. We look at what percent of students are students of color. What's our percent of special education services students? Our percent of English learners? Our percent of students that qualify for free and reduced meals? And then it also shows all those comparative districts, what the operating referendum and the capital levy are. If you look at OCEO, which is the gray bar, you can see that it's now been updated for those November election results. And then we look at the next two years. We look at twenty-four, which is the year we're planning for, and then also out one more year to twenty-five. And we ask those benchmark districts what they're using for revenue assumptions as well as expenditure assumptions. And then we're asking them if they have any anticipated reduction in the next two fiscal years and where they're anticipating their fund balance to be at the end of this current year, which is twenty-three. And then what is their fund balance policy? So at this point in time, we have six districts that were able to share their financial information this early in the process, and we are early in the process for districts. So in 2023, that last column on that document, it's showing that three other districts right now are considering requests in calendar twenty-three for operating referendums, capital levies, or building bonds. The next document in your packet is our estimated major cost drivers. Again, just to orient everyone to this spreadsheet, we look at our budget in four big broad categories. So we look at our salaries, benefits, purchase services, and then our supplies and others. And for twenty-three, that's 275.7 million. And then we apply a three percent factor for growth onto that number, or about 8.2 million dollars. And then we look at all of those categories again, and we start filling in this document and see how many items are known at this time. So at this point, if we look at the bottom of that document, we now have 1.36 percent of those expenditures identified for twenty-four, which means we have a remaining capacity right now of 1.64 percent of that three percent total growth. So that number is consistent with our numbers from the previous years. The next document in your packet is our budget planning timeline for twenty-four. So this document highlights key dates within our budget process, and the items in blue are where the board takes action. So partway down the page, you can see we're here tonight, November fifteenth, where we're asking for direction on the twenty-four budget process. And then next week, Tuesday, we'll be having the auditors in to present the twenty-two audit results. And then December thirteenth, we'll be asking the board to approve the fiscal year twenty-four levy limitation certification. And then in February, we'll come back to the board again with those twenty-three mid-year budget adjustments, as well as any twenty-four capital expenditure requests, and then any twenty-four operating fund requests. And then we'll work our way through to June, and at the June board meeting, we'll ask the board then to approve the twenty-four operating, capital, and non-operating fund budgets. So the next document in your packet is the fiscal year twenty-three adopted expenditure budget for all the budgeted funds. So we utilize this process for all of the budgeted funds except for the debt service fund. This pie chart shows the size of those funds in relation to each other. And the adopted budget for twenty-three was 337.7 million dollars. So now the next item in your packet is the general fund five-year projection. So we're going to show you four funds this evening, and they're all going to have the same format. So this is a high-level visual organizer for our financial forecast. The projection has now been updated with the November eighth election results, and there are three sections to this projection. The top section shows the revenue expenditure differences, the fund balance and fund balance percentages for that seven-year window that begins with the actual for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, the adopted budget for twenty-three, and projects out twenty-four through twenty-seven. You'll see some operational adjustments under the chart. This line is to highlight any needed adjustments, and those numbers are included within those expenditures listed above. The total for all years is listed to the right, and this assumption shows the revenue expenditure assumptions that are being used for twenty-four through twenty-seven. So for the general fund, our revenue assumption is a 2.06 percent annual increase, the basic formula allows, and that's a ten-year weighted average. And so as we know more information and have more years, we'll be adjusting that number. And then our expenditure increase is a three percent assumption. The next section shows the budget projection for revenues, which are in blue, and expenditures, which are in red. The trend line of those same colors shows the general trajectory of each of those items. As you can see, our expenditures are projected to outpace our revenues. The final section looks at the fund balance projection for that same time period. The green bar represents our actual and projected fund balances for each year. The orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance of five percent as set in board policy. Again, the trend lines show the trajectory of the fund balances related to that minimum. And as you can see, the operational reductions are needed to maintain the board-required minimum five percent fund balance. So under this model, we are planning currently for operational reductions of four million in fiscal year twenty-six and five million in fiscal year twenty-seven, for combined reductions of nine million. This model has not been updated with the next year's five-year enrollment projections, and they have not yet been finalized, and these are usually completed in December each year. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jeff.
Thank you. So, hello, I'm with Food and Nutrition Department. So we've got the same model that Kelly presented, like she said, for the Food and Nutrition Department. And if you look at our target minimum fund balance, we're targeted at a 12% as our minimum, whereas the general fund was 5%. And if you look at that top section, we've got the actual fiscal year 2022. You see revenue was at almost 17 million. That's a, that's a significant spike in what we saw in 2021 and previous years. Generally speaking, we've always been around the 13 million dollar mark. That spike is there really due to COVID funding, universal free meals, increased participation, increased reimbursements, grants that we received through COVID. So that's why that spike is there. And you see, in 2022, we increased our fund balance by 1,869,000 dollars to bring our total fund balance up last year to a little over six and a half million dollars, which is 43.9%. Now, MDE, and I've brought this up in past meetings, they only allow three months' average expenditure in our fund balance, which would equal about 5 million dollars, so we're over that. But they realized that districts across the state had significantly increased their fund balance due to COVID funding in fiscal year 2022, so that for this year, they increased that threshold to six months' average expenditures to allow districts time to plan and how to spend that down. Now, we've had that problem actually for the past couple of years before 2022, and we've put together a repair and maintenance plan and a replacement plan, which you've heard me speak about before. So really, this year, 2023, we're focusing on, on that and in future years as well, on, on replacing equipment. If you look at that five-year projection then from 2023 moving out to 2027, so we needed to pick a baseline year for 2023, our current year, and that brings us back to eighteen, nineteen was our first base year that we could pick that was pre-COVID, because the last three years, we were affected by COVID. So it's, that's a ways back, right? So these numbers are based on that, projecting down for reduced enrollment of about 400, and also projecting down for some of the DLA students that aren't in our brick and mortar buildings, right? So our revenue is looking at. So our revenue is looking at $12,900,000. And then as we move out to 2027, we've got that assumptions of 2% annually increase year-over-year, and that's due to the MDE reimbursement rates historically have been an increase of 2% to free, reduced, and paid reimbursements. And then expenditure increases are built in at a 3%. So if you're looking at 2025, it would show an ap- operational reduction of $200,000 in 2026 of $400,000, and 2027 of $600,000 to maintain that 12% target in fiscal year 2027. And we move down to that next section with the blue bars and the red bars. So if you look at actual '21 and '22, our revenues outpaced our expenditures. And historically, I've been here for five years now almost. In my time and even pre-my time, revenues have always outpaced expenditures, spare that first year of COVID where we had basically no school for months and we paid our employees and didn't have income coming in. So based on this model and this assumption, we're showing our expenditures outpacing our revenues from '23 to '27. And part of that is going to be due to drastically, I guess, moving to replace equipment. But overall, based on this model and based on past performance, I don't see our expenditures outpacing our revenues. I see that churning based on other things that come to play. Like Kelly mentioned, this model doesn't include increased enrollment for future years. It doesn't include things like looking at increasing lunch prices, which we haven't done in five years, and other operational efficiencies that we can put in from an expenditure standpoint, and increasing participations. And down at the bottom, we've got our fund balance projection. The green is our fund balance. And like the general fund, it's on a decline to hit that 12% based on this model with the assumptions of 2% revenue increase and 3% expenditure increase. That's all I've got for you at this time. I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Cave for community engagement.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carrie Cave in our community department. Brian has actually gone at a conference for community educators in Michigan. So he was the keynoter yesterday. So I'm eager to hear how that went for him. But I get to share a little bit on our budget. So, you know, first and foremost, as I met with him, you know, as you can see, our fund balance is anticipated to be much higher than Brian normally likes to present it in that 75% range, right? But the good thing that we can say is that our tactics worked through COVID. Long story short, right? So we worked very hard during COVID to kind of think through, how do we sustain a department that had to shut down, lay off staff, provide free childcare, multiple things? So our department has experienced lots of ups and downs the last few years through the pandemic. So it's really hard to kind of feel like we're on stable footing with our funding and budget, right? Because we don't have that trend line for the last few years of what is going to be happening within our programs. And people are coming back at different, in different areas of our programs through participation, right? Where SAC programs, village care programs historically have been really strong. Families have found other alternatives for care, and we have barriers around staffing, right? We can only accept so many students into the program now, too, right? So just again, trying to get our footing down. As we look at it though, looking at this year's fund balance moving forward on that 35%, there's a few things that we wanted to reflect on to make sure that you were aware. So as Jeff shared, Food and Nutrition Services got lots of funding for food. We did not pay for food for two and a half years for part of our programs, right? So we were able to access those programs for free as well for our students and families, which historically have been part of our budget. Just the month of September, Kid Stop alone at $25,000 in food costs, right? So you add that up pretty quickly. What that does to our budget is a huge impact. Another huge thing that has happened for our department, if you're familiar, we've had childcare stabilization grants that we've been able to apply for. So one of our coordinators each month is submitting paperwork to the state to apply for that. And last fiscal year, this year, we had over $500,000 that were able to be provided to our programs to help just stabilize what the childcare field looks like within that scope, too. Those are slated to end right now, June of 2023, and are actually reducing the rate of reimbursement already within that scope. So that's funding that will not be part of the equation for our department either moving forward. We're actually part of a conversation that with the Department of Human Services, they're looking at potentially continuing that beyond 2023, but looking at a couple of different models around attendance and/or operational supports to help the childcare field. So there's some interesting stuff that's coming out of COVID and just some impacts on childcare. Other things, like ADE has been held harmless to the states. That's impacted our budget, right? So our contact hours are down, but we're still receiving the same amount of funding we were in 2019 as well. So there's lots of things that are just unpredictable and volatile. Many of you know, we still continue to face inability to hire hourly staff. What does that look like and feel like? Our department relies very heavily on hourly casual staff, two-to-two and a half hour positions doing multiple roles. And those positions are really hard to fill right now. And when they are being filled, they're already being filled by people that are part of our budget, our board managers, myself going into a Kid Stop classroom before school, right? What does that look like and feel like? So that's already built into our budget. So again, we just don't really feel like we have a reliable trend within that scope for us. So it kind of feels, what was the word that we? It just feels fiscally prudent right now for us to have a little bit of a cushion because we don't know what is going to happen within our department and our scope within that means. But ideally, our goal is that 7 to 15%. So we are doing some things that are kind of, we're excited about. Friday, we posted the last two program manager two program manager positions that were eliminated from our department during COVID. So those are live and posted. We'll be fully back to the staff level we were pre-COVID, which is exciting for our team to kind of think and dream a little bit around kind of what's next. We're also doing just some work around FFNE replacement, fixtures, furniture, equipment. We really constricted, and our staff have not bought new supplies for the programs. Carts can only be fixed so many more times, right? So what does that look like and feel like for us to use some of that funding to replenish the stuff that we impact and touch in our buildings? And our staff are super excited. They're kind of making their dream list right now to think through how to replace that Candy Land game that's been taped three times and the pieces we're using from other things, right? So trying to make sure that we're being very responsible and utilizing those funds that our community members help us support. And then we're just continuing to closely monitor our finances, right? Looking for opportunities to ensure that we're being fiscally prudent, being able to explore new program areas within our department. One of the things we're super excited about, we're diving deep into middle school again, which we have not been. So working with a program manager to get feedback from our families and students on what middle school programming could potentially look like, too. So trying to take those, you know, I say business steps forward, right? As we try to think of a business supporting, we have to fund ourselves as community educators. How do we think through what our community needs? And at this time, what our community needs, too, and being able to have the flexibility to do that. So those are just some of the things that I think are important as you look at our numbers and what's that trend line looks like. And how do we continue to spend that down? And think through staffing is a huge one in our scope. And then how do we increase that to then continue to serve people in our community more throughout the different programs that we support?
So we're going to go to the last document in your packet, which is the capital fund five-year projection. This fund has a zero-based budget approach, which means our budget managers have to ask for every dollar that's approved within that budget. So the projection includes the November 8 election results. The top section shows our revenues expenditures and then those differences between our fund balance and fund balance percentage for that seven-year window. You're going to see some operational adjustments under that chart. This line highlights adding $2 million in expenditures in '24 and then reducing expenditures in '26 and '27 for a net change of $1 million. The assumptions section shows the revenue expenditures of 0% being used for '24 through '27. And then the next section shows the budgeted projections for revenues in blue and expenditures in red. The trend lines of those same colors again show the general trajectory of each of those items. And as you can see, expenditures are projected to outpace the revenues as is planned. The final section looks at our fund balance projection for that same time period. The green bars represent our actual and projected fund balances for each year. The orange bar shows the minimum required fund balance of 10% for this fund. And again, the trend lines show the trajectory of that fund balance related to that minimum. And as you can see, we're managing this fund to maintain that minimum fund balance of 10%. So just like the general fund, the capital model will be updated when the five-year enrollment projections are finalized in December. And with that, I'll turn it back over to John.
Thank you. So now that you've been updated on our current financial picture in each of the funds, we're requesting some direction from the board as it relates to budget targets. As in past years, there are two items which we're seeking direction. First, as we mentioned earlier, we have a preliminary, preliminarily given budget managers directions to operate under a zero-based budget approach, meaning any increase proposed would need to have a budget decrease in a different area. So first question is, would the board like us to continue with that direction?
What's the other option?
Spend faster, which results in more reductions later.
So maybe this is a good spot to just assert, you know, again, our gratitude to the voters. That was 15% of our budget. And we're still making cuts in the out years. We just pushed that down the line. So otherwise, it'd have been, instead of $9 million, we're open at $5 next year and $49 the next year, right? So it allows us to stay. So I think our modeling, if you want us to be more aggressive in our spending, when we're, you know, we're anticipating revenue at 2.06, that's a weighted average, which is a change that the board asked for. But we still expect expenditures to be 3%. And then the cost of goods and things, services, you know, are still fluid. So we're still going to be spending at a faster rate than revenues coming in until we see maybe something different from the state. But for now, I think, you know, you're wise to stick to our modeling until we know more.
The second question that we typically ask is whether board members support giving budget managers guidance to align any budget adjustments with the strategic directions and work initiatives that are in the strategic plan. So as long as we're adjusting to match that strategic plan, are we okay moving forward with those items?
I mean, generally, yes. But I guess, doesn't it kind of depend on what they are?
Well, so what initial feedback we gave to budget managers was that we have done a fair number of strategic investments in the last two years, and we prefer to evaluate those pending referenda. And really, we're, you know, we completed phase one. We're still in the informational part of phase two, but it might mean we're coming back for more. So do we want to add spending? Or do we want to evaluate where at before we get through those other priorities? So not necessarily saying no, but that's going to be information that we bring back to the board for the board to make a decision on. So it's, you know, I guess our initial, our initial general parameter was please refrain. But we're, you know, we'll let the board make that final decision.
Yeah, I think that's what was a really good add to our process. So between the pair process, which in those situations where we can't offset or it's brought forward to review by the board, that's a really critical part of our process so that we can be making really specific trade-offs and judgment calls. I think it's, you know, we talked about this last cycle, that those investments, when we say strategic investment isn't meant to be ongoing, it's meant to be a strategic investment evaluated. And then we should be saying, yes, move forward, put this into the operational fund. And now what do we look at as the next strategic investment? Or where do we get dollars for strategic investments? So I think those are very consistent with what we've talked about in the financial processes for this past few years.
I think what you'll see next month, because we've just maintained that focus, positive outcome results. And you're going to see that again next month. I'm sorry, next week.
It feels like a month. All right. Well, with that, I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions or feedback.
Hi, just a little bit of feedback. I just wanted to say I really appreciate your presentation for community education, sorry, I was at engagement. And I believe you're right. It is a prudent for us to kind of just stay where we are. But I just wanted to say, on the middle school piece, the one thing I hear consistently, time and time again, is exactly that, that we don't have enough offerings at middle school. But particularly, our sixth graders get kind of left behind because seventh graders are eligible to participate in Minnesota State High School sports. But sixth graders aren't, and they don't really have very many opportunities. And I personally firmly believe that if we can provide more opportunities to engage those sixth graders in their first year of middle school as being a part of the community, we'll see better academic outcomes and more positive behaviors. So I'd really like to see an emphasis on the sixth grade, middle school.
Yeah, taking back on that, I know you've had some prior conversations about rates of participation in after-school activities as we've kind of looked at the offerings. I think that might be something worthwhile at a point in time in the future to kind of bring to the board. I'm not sure everybody's seen that or understood that. And I think it's a great part of our culture of excellence and our work to close the achievement gap is keeping kids engaged in participating in activities. I think that'd be some really useful data points that I know that we've done research on.
I also, yeah, I think it's great looking at middle schools. And then, I know we had a couple of years ago a discussion just even about middle school sports and that one way and what that's done. So I know I think that's a really positive thing. You know, the other thing I was always wondering, I've seen like Brooklyn Center, you know, they do some, they have different activities they've partnered with. I don't even know what foundations to offer, really no or low-cost, like basketball programs and things like that. Like have we looked at, you know, partnering with cities or foundations to be able to provide some? I know we met with one of the, or? There's some, just some, you know, different grants and things like that.
We definitely explored grants. We did have a 21st Century grant for many years, which we were able to do some of that program. And Brooklyn Center still has that grant. We were kind of, the answer I got, long story short, is Ossio had a 21st Century grant for a long period of time. So they wanted to move on to other districts that hadn't had access to those funds, right? We still are looking at, there was supposed to be a new 21st Century grant released probably about a year ago that hasn't been released either, right? So I'm constantly looking at that stuff to look for those opportunities to provide that. One of the things that I think we are looking at is the community department in Minneapolis is looking at kind of like a pay-how-much-you-can model for some enrichment. So you could offer to pay 150% to participate in a chess class. And then that 50% could be used to help another student pay a lesser rate. So families can choose on a scale, right? Where do they want to pay to be in some of those classes? So we're learning alongside some of our Minneapolis counterparts. It's exciting. And then, of course, we're always looking at ways we can find opportunities for families to participate. We worked with a local theater provider at one of our sites and offered a $15 enrichment theater program, right? The class filled. The class filled. Historically, at that site, we've never been able to fill that program before. So again, looking at finding ways of looking at community partnerships, like you said, or what are ways that we can then think through having a little wiggle room in our budget to do some of those to increase participation and ensure families the opportunities that they can participate in? And then how do we think collectively as a community department around, is it sliding scale, is it entrance fees, is it, what does that look like and feel like more holistically versus programmatically?
Well, I'd be kind of Brian, I kind of ran through what rides there this summer. Just with cooking classes and the soccer and those programs are really great.
I know Brian does spend a significant amount of time talking to our partners because we don't want to duplicate and we want to make sure we maximize all of our resources. One of the items we received some feedback at a listening session was, are we, so for example, Brooklyn Park Athletics, are they really reaching the students in our school district with the opportunities? And there's been some potential barriers to that. So I think there's, there's different ways to partner and there's unique partnerships, but I know Brian spends a lot of time working through that with our community partners.
Some of those are expensive.
Absolutely.
I mean, some of those other programs are super expensive.
Yeah, I think what you're going to go is staying open, and those partnerships are critical for the success. So when we have others indeed with us, we get multiple touch points throughout there.
Because it's not just families, I mean, there's families that are, you know, experiencing, you know, low-income families, but then there's also, you know, families with multiple kids too. I mean, it's, it can be.
Absolutely, like even one of the, looking at summer, right? How do we share our summer opportunities holistically with families versus à la carte what you're getting from your individual building or staff too, right? So thinking comprehensively around some of that coordination, I think is critical within our department too.
I think maybe taking it a step further also, when we think about our family and community engagement, I continually hear people saying that they want to help. They, they have organizations that want to do things, but they don't know how. And I think that needs to be a critical aspect of our family and community engagement department. They, they need to have somebody who is, that's their primary focus, is connecting the resources that already exist with the needs that already exist because both of them exist, and finding that connection point is really hard. It just kind of reminded me of, of that aspect of it, that we, we have so many resources already. Kind of like when we have one school that has too many volunteers and they're turning people away, instead of turning them away, we should be sending them to another school to volunteer. Just kind of keeping that community.
And now that I'm going, Director Simons and I were talking about this, how do we identify what our process is, protocol for entertaining new partnerships? What's our inventory? Who are we working with? And what's the entry point, touch point? So it's clear, it's transparent, and it positions us better for, for new opportunities, right? So I think there's a procedural side that can, can help, to help us be more efficient. So you guys are hitting on the same idea, right?
Jeff, I've got a question for you. I'm curious of, just as we move forward and we talk about food security for families and we were still free meals that we had, and now I know there's a pilot program of Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Yeah. How is that impacting, like what have you, have you been hearing things? Have your staff been hearing anything about families feeling like are not able to pay or feeling caught off guard or frustrated with having to?
You know, I've heard, I've heard some of our English as second language students at Park Center specifically, that they weren't sure if they had, you know, if meals are free anymore, if they could eat or not. So Kirsten Nicholson was in the office the other day, and we were talking about how we can get that word out to them at Park Center specifically and other English language students that, you know, meals, yeah, they're not free, but you can always have a meal regardless of ability to pay and how to really find out if you have qualified. Because if you do qualify for free and reduced, ultimately, we send a letter and email to the family telling them that they've qualified. And with that Medicaid pilot that Minnesota took on this year, it's been in, over the U.S. in multiple states for the past few years. But that directly certifies more families based on Medicaid. So in the past, we've directly certified through SNAP and programs similar to that. And we've always seen a direct certification rate of about 3,300, 3,400 students, whereas with the Medicaid, that jumped, that pushed it up to over 8,000, so more than double that directly certified. So we've seen our free and reduced percentage increase drastically, especially early on because they were directly certified. And I think we were at 46% prior to October 31st, but it rolls back, so we're at 44%, which is still much higher than our historic 39, 40%. So.
So, I mean, this has come up in AMSD as a legislative platform piece around universal free meal, but how will that, with that passed?
Oh, it would be great, yeah. I mean, yeah, there's, there'd be a few things to work through as far as, you know, what's the expectations of collecting applications as it relates to, to funding for schools, right? Compensatory. There would be things to work through as how do we, do we identify students at the point of, point of sale at the cash register? Or are we just clicking like we did through the pandemic or like we're allowed to over the summer? So there's definitely some things to work through. But excited.
Did that happen?
That'd be great.
I'll put in, I'll put in the bug besides the universal, the universal food, the change around online learning students. So online students, no matter where you are in the state, do not qualify for food nutrition or transportation, which is a gap for a good chunk of students in our state and in our district.
And our professional organizations are lobbying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to transition this to our next, next topic of our long-term facility maintenance, okay? And this is one of my favorite ones because you get to see results of your investments, some pictures and updates on the, the very hard work of our facility team, so they'll always deliver on this.
All right, so we're going to get that presentation pulled up, so give me just a sec here.
Let's be.
Might need them out.
You only know to clear a room.
Really quickly.
Just hit, they hit escape, Dale, and it should pop out of it. Can you just close that? Hey, leave, and this is the good stuff.
I know. It is the good stuff.
The fun stuff.
It looks like it's been a night of software updates or something.
Well, they came out, the warning came out for everybody to update in advance 48 hours ago, so those that didn't, it's now automatically going.
So like the random computers in here? Did you see Dale that lower?
Don't take it personal.
Up a little, straight, just a hair, right there.
Two days ago.
Okay. So long awaited, but once again, we're excited this evening to update you on our long-term facility maintenance or LTFM program. That includes work that was wrapped up from this past summer as well as work we're planning for next summer and beyond. This presentation is an important benchmark in our annual process as the board will begin considering bids for work to be completed in next summer's projects. Timeliness of the bid process is important to ensure the maximization of our available funds. Again, Dale Carlstrom, Director of Facilities and Transportation Operations, is here. Dale and his team have been working diligently to bring much-needed repair and maintenance to all of our buildings while staying within budget. I will turn it over to Dale, but also want to thank Dale and his team, Jeff Arthurs and Colin O'Brien for their commendable work on our 10-year LTFM plan. So take it away, Dale.
Thanks, John. Good evening, board and cabinet members. This evening, we'll be reviewing the facility projects and planning for long-term facility maintenance. Our outcomes for the presentation are to inform the board regarding construction results from our summer work, construction planning for the summer of 2023, and financial and operational results for the work that has been completed since the inception of our 10-year long-term facility maintenance work that was started in the summer of 2017. Finally, I will briefly describe the role LTFM plays in our building of better future planning. We began our more intensive or extensive LTFM efforts in the summer of 2017 with a revised budget of $241 million over 10 years. With inflation factored in, our, our current board-approved 10-year plan is $287 million. This summer was the sixth construction season, and we have completed $165 million in renovations and restoration work throughout the school district. Our plan to date has a $3 million bond fund balance that reflects our commitment to operate at the LTFM plan within the board-approved funding limits. I'd like to recognize the teams of professionals that helped make this plan a reality. Our facilities operations team led by Jeff Arthurs, our health and safety team led by Rachel Kohler, our owners representatives team at ICS, our mechanical design team at Halberg Engineering, our architectural design teams at Wald Architects and ATS and R Architects, and our environmental consultants and commissioning agents at IEA. All of these professional partners work together to improve our facilities and share in the facilities operations department commitment to stewardship of our facilities and resources. I'd like to express my gratitude to these people who make our facilities improvements possible. In 2016, we had over 2,000 outstanding work orders, and today we are maintaining at a 200 to 300, depending on the season that we're in. We have traditionally maintained a $600,000 contingency for emergency mechanical repairs, and we reduced that budget to $250,000. Our efforts have increased the performance and reliability of the heating and cooling systems and refocused our efforts on maintaining these assets as, as opposed to repairing them. We have experienced fewer complaints from our sites, and we have avoided any catastrophic system failures that would interrupt daily school operations. Our operations team is committed to measuring the effectiveness of our restoration efforts. From the beginning of the 10-year plan, we've monitored, measured, and compared our utility usage to ensure that we are experiencing desired effects. Our mechanical improvements are, are monitored for reliability, serviceability, and occupant comfort. We have invested in building automation systems that monitor all the HVAC systems. We have also added a technician to our maintenance team who monitors building automation systems and continues and communicates problems before they become issues for our staff and students. As you might expect, utility costs are a very significant portion of our facilities operations budget. In fiscal 2022, we spent over $4.5 million on utilities. Our LTFM efforts have helped us realize a 23.5% cost avoidance in utilities as compared to our 2016 baseline year. Since the beginning of the 10-year plan, we have had Nexus, our energy consultant, calculate the utility results and compare them year by year. Our consultant from Nexus assures us that our efforts are paying off with significant cost avoidance. This chart shows the utility cost per square foot for all ISD 279 schools. The sites that are leading the way in low cost per square foot are those that have had major restoration projects. Our consultants adjusted our comparative results for heating and cooling degree days as well as energy cost fluctuations. There are variables, however, that we have a more difficult time correcting that sometimes appear in the results. One major factor is summertime site use. The air conditioning system used, use a lot of electrical energy during the summer months when we host summer programming. Another major factor to keep in mind is that during the 2022 fiscal year, we ran our HVAC systems four hours longer every day, but we continue to show significant cost avoidance. Here are some comparative results that illustrate the utility savings that we are experiencing after major work has been done. Note that Birch Grove and Cedar Island have relatively the same building footprint. We are confident that our projects that are going to be underway, that are going to be underway at Cedar Island will show similar results in the coming year. I'd like to turn our attention to the more recent results from the work that we've been doing this year. This summer, we completed six major projects. In addition, we have completed over 50 projects that the facilities operations team managed, such as roofing, flooring, lighting, doors, exterior envelope, paving, et cetera. We focus on our efforts on 16 areas of deferred maintenance that touch every school in our system. In addition to this work, we have $1.6 million, a $1.6 million budget for health and safety initiatives. The risk management team and our consultants work with the larger LTFM planning team to incorporate projects that fall under the health, safety category. We plan this work in advance of the major projects so that the renovations can occur within, without interruption. These health, safety projects include asbestos abatement, fire protection systems, fall protection systems, underground storage tanks, elevator renovations, and sound abatement. All the major projects were substantially complete in August, except for the Park Center locker room project that will begin in March and run continuously through the summer. Our projects have stayed on budget, but we have experienced increasing challenges to keep projects moving forward and expenses in check. Our project planning team is working on creative means to, to order mechanical equipment in advance to prevent project delays. As, as an example, we have already ordered chillers and air handling units for next year's projects. Some of this equipment requires lead times up to 67 weeks. I'd like to commend the general construction and subcontractors who faced with unprecedented challenges, pulled together with our project management team to problem solve and get these very difficult projects on, you know, started on time and functional, and with functional systems. This summer, we completed renovations to the oldest portion of Osseo Senior High. While the east wing has had some updates in the 1990s, the bones are still from 1952, and the finishes and mechanical equipment needed to be replaced. This is the third phase of a multi-phase process budgeted at $4.8 million and coming in on budget. The planners have worked with Osseo Senior High's leadership to better understand how the facility is used, and we created spaces that better reflect the day-to-day use. Notice that we have removed the lockers that were not used and created stand-up space and benches for students to work, socialize, and even charge a device. Pictured in the before picture is a vertical unit ventilator. This is a standalone heater that, that has a motor, filters, steam trap, belts, valves, and all, that all require service. These units are very noisy and poorly circulate the air in the space. They take up a lot of space and they are difficult to control remotely. In the after picture, you can see that we have removed the vertical unit and installed chilled beam units in the ceiling along the outside wall. This provides even, even airflow throughout the space with fewer moving parts and frees up a lot of floor space for obstruction. Pictured here are two areas in the east wing that are examples of the extent of the demolition, both in the hallway and the classroom. We were able to see the 1950 bones of this part of the building up close and personal. We ran into many ceiling condition, or concealed conditions that required creative problem solving, countless stand-up meetings, and a lot of head scratching. Questions like, why did they do it this way? And how did, how did they do it this way? And what the heck is this for? And why is it here? Through the life of these project, of this project, there was over 70 formal RFI's, requests for information, which usually required one of these stand-up meetings, observations, and a formal response with directions on how to proceed. This, this summer was, it was time to renovate Osseo Senior High's stadium, the first phase of the two-phase project. The priority work for this phase was to replace the turf, stadium lights, electrical service, visitors' bleachers, and the scoreboard. The light standards in the bleachers were original equipment. They were replaced, we replaced the turf that was installed in 2009 and installed a video scoreboard and moved the transformer from the end zone and placed it outside of the stadium. Palmer Lake is a two-phase project that started this summer with the objective of replacing the air handling units and adding new classroom distribution systems to replace the original dual duct system and several unit ventilators. The project includes restorations to the finishes and casework throughout the building. The first phase of the project is on target with the plan, and we have had limited change orders and a few unforeseen conditions. It is helpful that we have successfully completed the same project at Birch Grove and Fair Oaks. The Palmer Lake classrooms have, have had some, had this, had some. The Palmer Lake classrooms have had some 1960 casework, sinks, countertops, and interspersed within that updated counters and cabinetry that didn't match. Pictured here are some of the new casework, sinks, and countertops that update the appearance of the classroom. We have improved the functionality of the casework by interviewing the classroom teachers to better suit the needs of today's classroom. Pictured here is a restroom at Palmer Lake, and above it is the restoration that will take place at all the restrooms upon completion of the project. The new restrooms and the hand washing stations will have updated appearance and will be more easily maintained. This year marks the beginning of the accelerated initiative to update our playground equipment, play area curbing, and playground fall protection. We have moved from one replacement a year to three, and we will continue this pace until we have completed the list of aging playgrounds. Pictured here is the new Fair Oaks playground. We did also playgrounds at Edinburgh and Basswood. Next summer, we will intend to replace playgrounds at Park Brook, Palmer Lake, and Weaver. This facilities operations team and Park Center's Senior High's team are excited to begin in March the construction of the Park Center Senior High locker room, team room, and classroom renovations. The design team worked closely with the admin and educators to understand the needs of our students, student athletes, staff, and coaches. Student needs and interests have changed since 1971, and we are working to address these changes in the design and layout of both the locker room, classrooms, and team rooms. We focused on matters of choice, privacy, security, school pride, and branding. The board approved the bid award at the October public meeting, and the award is slightly under our projections. The five locker rooms and four classrooms are scheduled to be complete the fall of I'd like to focus on our attention on 2024 and the projects that we will be starting next summer. Our budget is $23.5 million, and we have completed the sale of LTFM bonds this summer to support this work, and we are well on the way with the design development bid process. Our major areas of focus will be beginning the Cedar Island renovation, finishing Palmer Lake's second phase, Basswood mechanical replacement, Elm Creek Rice Lake restroom groups, Park Center Senior High stadium turf, and Osseo's home bleachers. Cedar Island will be the last of the four sister schools, Fair Oaks, Birch Grove, Palmer Lake, and Cedar Island to be renovated. Upon completion of Cedar Island, we will have invested over $24 million in these four buildings. All four sites have had the boiler rooms renovated prior to this work. As mentioned earlier, the two buildings that are complete show great improvements in reliability and utility savings. The Cedar Island project was awarded by the board at the October meeting, and it came in over the budget estimates. It came in at $6.6 million, which was over by $700,000. This is a good example of how unpredictable the current market is. The Park Center Senior High project was bid at the same time with the same costing model and was under budget. Pictured here is an example of some of the finishes updates that are planned at Cedar Island. We work closely with the site team to choose colors and finishes that improve the look and serviceability of these finishes. Most of the HVA systems at Basswood should be replaced. We are doing a mechanical renovation as a first step to position ourselves for future restorations of the boiler room, equipment, and piping throughout the building. The bid opening for this project is scheduled for December 5th, and if all goes well, we will have a bid award recommendation for the December board meetings. Four restroom groups remain at Elm Creek and Rice Lake and will be renovated using the same design that we used for prior work over the last two summers. We're in the plan review phase and will have this project ready for bid in December. Park Center Senior High will have the turf replaced during the summer, which will complete the replacement process for all three high schools stadium fields. Osseo Senior High Stadium will have the home bleachers and the press box replaced. The support structure of these bleachers is the original 1970s, and the press box is in poor condition. We will be doing some repairs and updates to the press boxes at Park Center and Maple Grove Senior High as well. The facilities operations team is involved with the Building a Better Future Subcommittee to better understand the future direction for facilities development. We are focused on positioning sites to be ready to do significant architectural work by developing infrastructure that will support future needs without adding expense to the building initiative. It is the facilities operations team's responsibility to leverage the annual LTFM commitment by prioritizing work that will improve existing conditions to support facility development. Here's some examples of our efforts to do so. Rice Lake classrooms, we have done equipment replacement from the boiler room up to the classroom. Cafeteria renovations, gymnasium renovations, restrooms, all this work positions us to do the classroom remodels in the future. Park Center Senior High's three-story, we have replaced the support mechanical that feeds this three-story renovation, the three-story, and renovated the restrooms, completed asbestos abatement, all in the preparation for the future classroom renovations and media center remodel that could take place in the future. North U Middle School's two-story, we've completed new or soon-to-be-new support mechanical need work that support all the way from the boiler room to the new to the two-story. The classrooms and the media center need to be remodeled, and we are preparing for future renovations to this space and the media space. Osseo Senior High's multi-phase approach, over the past few years, we have done extensive mechanical work that we talked about earlier, which totals over $15 million. This was very intense work that positions us well for Osseo's future remodeling work. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, I'm proud of the work our facilities team has accomplished in our efforts to be good stewards of our community assets. I greatly appreciate the school board's commitment to the LTFM objectives and the community's support for this work. I will open it up now for the board chair and questions.
I need to take one more moment to thank Dale, Jeff, Colin, John, so many others. What you see in this presentation is a number of really important things for you as a board. So despite high volume, high number of projects, an organization as big as us, yet cost savings, reliable, so no interruptions, no emergency repair costs, right, on time despite supply chain and increased costs, staying on budget, and using those cost savings for the projects, right? So, and then in the end, it looks amazing. So behind the scenes, a lot of things happen when our users of our facilities come in, and they're always behind you. And I think it's all the things we're set out of mind, you know, think of it when there's a problem. So we'll say thank you very often, Dale, and thank you for the suggestion, Jeff, and Colin, and others for getting all the right boxes here, right? And with a really large number of projects in budget. So I think we're getting high continually improved value for the investments year over year. So I may have questions about maybe individual projects, but as a whole, tremendous management of all the moving parts to these things that are happening simultaneously. And we'll add some along into this.
Yeah. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, really piggybacking off of what Cory said, is one thing that I have found over the years that I deeply appreciate is the foresight of what will be coming down the road, really thinking critically about what projects may be coming up, and taking that into account while we're doing current projects, instead of just putting a Band-Aid and then having to then undo work, which I think probably is why you found random things, right? That didn't make sense where you're scratching your head going, what the heck? Is because we weren't necessarily thinking through those things in the past. We were just like, we got to do this right now, we got to do it. So, you know, I really, really appreciate that because it is saving a considerable amount of cost for our district, number one, but also it's making those spaces remain functional for our students and creating less disruptions to their learning, which is also really important. So I just really wanted to echo off of that, that foresight, I feel like, is just impeccable. And saying, hearing that you're ordering products and materials already for projects that you know are going to be way down the road because the lead time is so far out, I think is so critical. I know personally, when I do, I do a lot, I renovate my house all the time, but I like to have everything on hand before I start because I'm afraid of that happening, of not having what I need, right? And so I just really appreciate hearing that you're already considering those things.
I just want to say that sometimes we underestimate the power of schools that are updated and warm and welcoming and considering, you know, one of our values is all students have intrinsic value. I think, having worked in a building where it hadn't been, you know, maintained for a long time, you get, as a teacher and student, you get the message that you're not important. So I think it's worth it to just kind of put that out into the air. And then I have a question. Are these the last vertical unit ventilators? Do we still have those if not those things?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I remember one.
We're getting down there, but I don't know, only we have two.
Do you think we have four or five sites left?
No, I remember momentarily. That's saying something, Danny. No, it just overstimulates the students, and it's just not, hey, not the worst.
Well, I remember I was wanting to sit near one in the winter so that I could take a nap after lunch and if you bore, I'm not kidding.
After lunch.
Yeah. Biology, biology, guys, I'm sorry.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, do we have any info on our solar panels and how that's affecting our long-term?
I'm working on getting that information, so about once a week, we get a notification from Excel that another panel's coming online or another whole array. So I wanted to have an update for you, and it didn't quite, timing-wise, work with this because they're still coming online, and so we'd rather give you the, here's the entire total so you can see, but we are working on pulling that information together to kind of see, how much power are we generating? What does that save us? So we'll have that here in the next.
When we get that update, can we have a collab with, like, learning and achievement for how the curriculum is attached to that, as they use?
Well, I think we had some things already built in, so some of the materials were okay, some of them weren't, but we often do that with our own.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. While you're on that topic, I want to comment, Jeff and the others, we've had some Excel Energy discussions because we have some power outages, and our team is on it and quick. And when they say, oh, we back on at 10:30 and it's back on at 9:00, that's because of the teamwork, you know? The relationships and the things that need to happen to remedy, maybe somehow get the things that Excel's working on. I know that looks like it's on us and it doesn't always on us. Sometimes I'm working with another partner to address those issues, and I know it's behind the scenes again happening, so I appreciate that very much.
I think tonight with the financial presentation, and this presentation really underscores that we have really strong teams of experts that I think are true asset to our district and really enables all of the other components of learning and the classroom environment and teaching. It's really critical infrastructure that maybe sometimes people don't really understand until we dig deep on evenings like tonight, or even, you know, some of the facility improvements are a little more visible, they're a little more fun or flashy, but all of the critical systems that we're constantly replacing and the multiple projects across the district that are very well balanced to keep all of our facilities at the right level of infrastructure and updates is just so crucial and I think a true competitive advantage for our district. So make sure we don't lose any of our good people, please, because you're just really important to what we do.
And you experienced yourself personally at the Park Center project, how we, and you kind of heard it throughout, I hope you caught it, the input from staff and scholars, like what are they hoping for? What makes construction of the experience better in a building beyond just kind of the technical aspect, right? So the extra time that is taken to listen and get those pieces, this is a better result. And the longevity of those projects is designed well on the front end.
Well, it was all the pride in our district, you know? I think what you were saying, it looks good, feels good, you know, you want to.
Well, to go along with that, the input from Director Simons was, hey, we should tout this, but you're doing it at Park Center coming up. So we have, Wold is actually building or creating big signage that will go out for all basketball games and all fall/winter sports here in the next couple of weeks to show this is coming soon. So we'll put that out as an example to say, here's what's coming, and it's a good start to, you know, as we move forward towards potentially build a better future facilities things, that we would want to do the same thing. This is what we're proposing. This is what we would like to ask. So that visual demonstration of what we can do is very powerful and again, creates that pride and, you know, what's, pride's the right word for what we want people to feel when they come into our building.
I had one question that I forgot to ask, and I apologize because I feel like this was answered in a previous meeting, but is Osseo Senior High Stadium getting bathrooms at some point?
That would be an item for Building Better Futures bond because that doesn't exist. And I can't, with LTFM funding, you know, something.
I couldn't remember if it was something that we had already slated as a project or not, though. Just because using the porta potties and the freezing cold, unpleasant.
So it's in our big wish list.
Yes, yeah. I just couldn't remember if it was something that we had, like, you know? Yeah. Oh, Park Center doesn't have bathrooms either?
No.
No, they use porta potties as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And even those felt warm on some of those football nights.
All right, unless there's another question?
I just had one thing that I thought of when we talked about our solar efforts. John's been working pretty diligently with a group to kind of fast-track installation of LED lighting in our schools. And I think today we kind of solidify an agreement that we're going to go moving forward with that. And we're going to see some significant increases then in our savings once we get LED lights and, I think, how many we got on the list, Jeff?
There's 13 sites.
13 sites that we'll be putting either mostly classroom lighting, so we'll be improving classroom lighting on a kind of stepped-up basis.
One of our early projects, really, and small ones, but it was the boardroom.
Yep, the boardroom was the first example of it.
The search's got them in there in year two.
Yeah, so the classrooms are going to get something.
So most of it, I think all of it, 12 of the buildings are school buildings, but this building will get completed as well. But some examples that you see, I think they, and this will come to probably the consent agenda next week, assuming we can get the contract. It runs under. It runs under a guaranteed energy savings program that the state has a statute that authorizes for us. So we put the program in place, and the savings generated by lowering our utilities pays for all the new equipment, and it has to by law, and the company has to put a performance bond to back it. So if for any reason it costs us more, the company pays that difference. So the district is out no money. So it becomes a bit of a no-brainer, in my determiner opinion, but it's got to fit the standards. Our guys have really high standards, and we want to make sure that what goes in fits those standards and is manageable within our systems. So it benefits us and doesn't cause a headache for some other reason. But I know this is projected to save us something in the range of 2.2 million kilowatts annually just in those 13 buildings. So it reduces their electrical load by 73% in those buildings.
All right. I want to move us into our last agenda item. Just, I want to highlight some things coming up on the calendar, some big things in front of us, exciting things. Next week, you will get the results of our NCR financial audit, and you'll also get a summary from K on our Building Better Future Phase One refinement results and kind of a look back on our communication plan, what we, the goals that we accomplished, the things we want to improve on. So really kind of wrap up that and really help us with any learning moving in the future. Question on just a second. Then into December, in these, you know, this month and next month, we get kind of squeezed weeks with the holidays. We'll be bringing legislative platform forward. You'll see the next strategic correction in the monitoring report, seeing our timeline for that, because then John will be giving you an update on enrollment. So you'll see it at the work session and then again at the regular meeting. And then, same with legislative platform, and we have our final levy proof of taxation hearing and presentation at that regular meeting. One thing I want to look out into January, and we're excited about the results of last year, we need to start thinking about the next steps because some good things are happening and creating some challenges for us. So the housing growth is going to challenge us quickly. So we are working through a timeline around Building Better Future Phase Two and kind of the process to help the board make what decisions and when, because we're very sensitive to the, you know, the financial environment we're in and that of our voters, and yet we see the enrollment coming. So we'll begin to lay out the work of our study groups, the oversight task force will be in place again, and mapping out for you from now and all the way into next summer, potential steps along the way to your decision-making. So I know we took a week to reflect, and now we're looking forward already on what we need to do with facilities. So more is going to be coming, probably starting even this week in that update, forecasting some of the timeline things that you're going to see. And we might even be asking board members to do some of those three-by-three meetings in December, get some feedback. We've already preemptively talked to Peter Levenman today around when might we want to do some additional surveying, probably two more surveys ahead of any potential bond ask. Just lining up those critical steps to make sure we have our community informed and that you are in favor of board in the decision-making. So, check on Phase Two. And we try to include language in Phase Two in each of our presentations, but you're going to run into people saying, "Phase Two? What's..." You know? So we've been trying to weave that in all the way back to last spring, Phase One, Phase Two, because facilities do come next, and these are good problems, these are growth challenges, which are going to happen. And then, of course, in January is the organizational meeting and review of board protocols and those things. So we have a little time before that, but it always comes faster than we think, so we're always looking ahead. So we have a lot of things to accomplish here before we go out on a break, and we have things to be recorded next week. So with this month and next month, the meetings are a week apart. We're going to cover a lot of ground in the next two months, month and a half, really a month from now. We're going to do a lot in the next 30 days. So that's kind of the highlights, and then we'll continue to update. I try to stay about a month ahead in my weekly updates on Fridays or Thursdays when I send those to you. And any other questions, just let me know, right? So with that, I think that's it for tonight. We're a little work on with several of that. We just finished for nine o'clock.
All right. The work session is adjourned at 8:50.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I started my day with Kelly. Thanks for hanging in there with Kelly.